President Richard, I will see, I'll tell him who's here. From the administration, it's myself, Jim Kolkim, Laura Boudreaux is here, Renee Gordon is here, Frank Barnes is here. Is there anybody else?
Hey, hey, Abbott.
Kate Abbott's here and Melissa Sennecole is here. From the board, I see Dick France, Leon Johnson, Chela Sikora, Fran Kenny, Jackie Kelly, Scott McInnany. Who am I missing from the board? Matthew Bykowski's here. And Nicole, right? Is it Nicole? Well, yep, and.
Ray Malino.
Ray Malino, sorry, Ray, and Bill Basic is here. And a Sherry Barber is listed as here, a member of the public, and I don't, and.
Did you get Scott?
I did get Scott, yeah. Okay.
Jeff Lee is connecting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Megan Mezcat has joined.
Okay, so I am going to at this time call for nominations for the Chair of the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union to be Chair.
Nominate Dick France.
All right, Ray Melino. Ray Melo, I have Ray Melo nominated Dick France, who was the second on that?
Fran, I agree.
Leon.
Fran, well.
Leon, okay, sorry.
Okay, all right, and are there any other nominations for Chair?
I'll move closed nomination.
Okay, there's been a motion made to close nominations.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ray, made by Fran, seconded by Ray, all in favor of closing nominations, play, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed to closing? Not hearing any, anybody abstaining from closing? Okay, so at this time, there's all in favor of Dick Francis, the Chair, and then the soon to be host of this meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposed? Anybody abstaining? Richard, I would record that as unanimous, and Dick, it is your meeting now to elect a co-chair and a clerk. I mean, a vice chair and a clerk, no, sorry.
Vice Chair, yes, we're opening for nominations for Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Ray Malino.
Is there a second? Are there other nominations? Can you say that again? Chela, it was real choppy.
I'm sorry, I'll second Ray.
So we have a nomination for Ray Malino, seconded by Chela.
I'll nominate myself.
And we have a nomination for Leon Johnson, is there a second?
Leon, you're on enough boards, so it's Chair.
Does that qualify as a nomination from you, Fran? I mean, a second? So, so who do we have for candidates now? We have Ray Malino, and we have Leon Johnson, with or without a second?
I didn't get a second.
Are there other?
I move closed nominations.
So we do have a second now? I did not hear a second? Okay.
I did second, but that's.
I, I have no idea what was just.
Chela did second.
Chela did second, okay.
Chela, why don't you try turning the camera off for a minute and see if that improves your audio?
Okay, yet nobody wants to look at this, it's good.
Okay, so we have two nominations on the floor, we have Ray, oh, and a second for Ray. All those in favor of Ray, signify by saying aye, and raising your hand, please.
Aye.
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 Looks to me like one, two, three, four, five. I see five hands for Ray.
Vote for myself, I guess. I'm on the, I'm on the phone and I'm, I'm for, I'm voting yes.
Six then for Ray. And for Leon, would you raise your hand, say aye, please?
Aye.
I'll vote for Leon.
Okay, there are two for Leon, congratulations, Ray. You have the majority of the vote as Vice Chair. Thank you very much. We also need a clerk. And past year with Chela, are there nominations for a clerk?
I nominate Chela.
Is there a, we have a nomination, nomination of Chela, and a second, are there any other nominees? Seeing none, all those in favor of Chela as the clerk, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think that looks like, are there any abstentions? Looks like a unanimous vote, Richard. Okay, the agenda for tonight reads as follows. After the reorganization, we have public comments, we have an executive session for the purpose of evaluating the superintendent, so we will go out into a different kind of format that Jim knows about.
Breakout room.
Breakout room, thank you, for the purpose of going over the superintendent's evaluation with this board. And then we can make decisions from there about when to evaluate Jim in person. Item four is finance, we have a treasurer's report from January and February of 21. We have a consent agenda which includes minutes warrants, leave of absence, retirements, resignations. We have no policies tonight, we have the superintendent's report, the Chair's report, and then some informational material. I understand that the agenda, that we wish to amend this agenda.
Yes, Renee, could you speak to what the two items like to ask, add to the agenda?
Sure, under finance, if we could add the procedure for executing contracts, so this is a motion that we typically take on an annual basis after the board reorganization, and then the second item would be authorization for the Chair and Vice Chair to sign warrants if we have to have an off-cycle warrant or the board does not regularly meet.
Okay, so we have added under finance, there's no other amendments to the agenda. Then we've added under finance, we'll call it item B, which is execution of contracts, a procedure for that, and see the authorization for the Chair and the Vice Chair to sign an off-cycle.
I'll make a motion that we adopt these as adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you, Ray, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a second from maybe Fran. Is there any discussion on this motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, any abstentions? Okay, seeing none, motion passes.
amended. Paul Whelan, do you wish to amend the agenda tonight also, or are you not ready at this point?
Not tonight, thank you for asking.
Okay.
That goes to public comments, item two, do we have public presence? Is Sherry Barber a member of the public?
Yes, she is.
And Jeff Lee has his hand up.
Okay. Well, Sherry Barber got the first mention, Sherry, can you unmute yourself? And there we go, and please express your comments.
Um, I don't have any comments, I'm just here as a member of the public.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, and Jeff Lee, Jeff Lee wish to be recognized?
Yeah, how are you guys? Um, I know in the educational, the elementary district meeting, I mentioned it the other day about potentially looking at a parent advisory committee. I really encourage the SPSU to consider moving forward this way, as I feel is also important for families to have more input on what's going on in the district as far as transparency. And just so, you know, there's, you know, better communication between, I feel, you know, the district and families, I mean, it's been a difficult year with COVID, and a lot of things happened rather quickly. But I think this would just allow for more transparency, more parent involvement, and decisions that are affecting our children within the district. This is common, you know, in many states, as state laws, and I know, I believe Burlington School District does have something like this as well, so it's not uncommon to have something like this in place. So I'd encourage the board, the SPSU board, to consider, you know, looking at this and maybe presenting this as an option for the families and the students in our district to be more involved with the education in our area. Thank you.
Jeff, is it possible you could write up some guidelines or a format that we might consider at a future meeting?
Um, I can.
Included, I think.
Yep, I can definitely do that, and I can submit it for the next meeting, if that works good for you, Dick.
If that's the pleasure of the board, we'll leave that with Jeff. I see no objections, thank you, Jeff.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you very much.
And we need at this time to move into an executive session to discuss Mr.
Cheryl Barbara with her hand up again.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sherry, go. I, there you go.
Yeah, I had to unmute, actually, I did want to say I'm a member of the public, I have public hat on tonight, tonight, but I am also, I work in the early ed program, SPSU. And I've been in that, I've been in early ed for like, I think this is my 32nd or 33rd year, so I've been here for a very long time. But I just want to say Kate and Megan are doing an awesome job, I think we have a phenomenal team, the longevity in early ed. There's a lot of staff, we've been working together for a very long time, and we rock it, we're, I think we're an awesome team. Thanks, Megan, thanks, Kate.
I think they're an awesome team too, thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, Sherry. Other comments? Bill Basic? No, no? He's agreeing, I guess. No other public comments? Then we need a motion to move into executive session. We have Fran, a second from Ray, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No abstentions? Jim, how do we go there? Okay.
Getting an invitation to join the breakout room.
And how do we know how to get back?
I'm going to come in for a minute and tell you how to do that, and then I'll come back to the regular meeting.
Okay, so we're going to go into an executive session in a break around room, a breakout room to consider Jim's evaluation. I guess it looks like we are. What I'll do, Jim, is work out a date and a time with you to go over the evaluation, and without any issues, it would be presented at the next SPSU meeting as a public document.
All right, I'll wait to hear from you.
Okay. Next item is finance, we have a treasurer's report from January 2021 and from February 2021. Is there a motion to accept? Did I hear Fran with a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Second from Jackie is their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the reports for January and February 2021, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? With Chela? No, okay, no, no opposed, no abstentions, motion carries, the reports are accepted, our consent agenda.
All right, we got those two items that were added on.
And I'm sorry, I, pardon me, I, you know. That's, anyway, second item is the process for executing contracts.
I'll move it.
Do you want me to read the language into the record?
Yes.
Okay. So what we're looking for is a motion to authorize the superintendent or his or her designee to execute contracts, I'm sorry, to execute on behalf of the supervisory union purchase orders, agreements for consulting services, grant agreements, and other contracts arising affecting the routine operation of the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union. The superintendent or designee shall not execute any contracts resulting from a public bid process, any employment agreements, and any long-term contracts without express authority from the board.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll move it.
Well, I'll second them.
Okay, we, this looks like we have a motion from Leon and a second from Ray, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstentions? And the motion carries. Item C is authorization for the Chair and the Vice Chair to sign warrants in an off-cycle situation. Do we have a motion?
Hello?
Motion from Fran.
I'll second it.
Second from Leon, the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And the motion carries to authorize the Chair or the Vice Chair. Thank you, Renee, item five is a consent agenda, which includes January 27 minutes and February 4 minutes, along with warrants, leaves of absences, retirements, resignations, nominations.
I'll move it.
Now, we have a motion from Fran, who have a second?
A second.
Second from Chela, it looks like, is there discussion?
Dick, I just have a question on procedure, not having been at the meeting, are you, are, is your process to accept the minutes or approve the minutes?
I guess approve is a more appropriate term, yeah.
Okay, so not having been at the meeting, then I should abstain from voting on approving the minutes?
If you're not at the meeting, you have no way of knowing that the minutes are correct.
Right, but it, but it bundling the consent agenda with all of those other components, then you're abstaining from voting on all of those components.
Or we can pull out.
I don't want to complicate things, I just want to do it the right way.
It's, it's not a complication, and it's done frequently.
As I can see the, the difference, what Nicole's saying is that if you're accepting the minutes, she could accept the minutes because that's just, you're acknowledging them as opposed to approving them, is that what I'm?
Yeah.
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 So we're, it even more.
Yeah.
I think, I think we should just go ahead, which is with the process that we've engaged in in the past, which is to pull, pull the minutes out for a separate approval. Given that we've got several members who were not present at those meetings.
We can do that very easily.
So I make the motion that we approve the minutes separately from the main consent agenda, which the main consent agenda would then include the warrants and the, the acceptance of resignations and nominations.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion from Ray and a second from Leon to separate the minutes from the consent agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions? All right, we will vote separately on the minutes in a minute, but the balance of the consent agenda includes warrants, leaves of absence, retirements, resignations, and nominations. Do we have a motion?
Hello?
We have a motion from Fran.
Second.
Second from Ray, is there discussion? I, I have just two statements to make here. Patricia Bombard and Julie Help, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, are two very long-term people in our system. Patricia had 38 years and Julie at 27. People just stick with it, and it's hard jobs, I don't know how we recognize this, but at least in a public forum like this, I'd like to say thank you very much for your persistence and your professionalism for that length of time.
I'd like to agree with those sentiments, and I would like to add Gail Morissette's in there, who's been our treasurer for 13 years, I believe.
That would have been my next comment, Ray. And, and along with the same thing. Did I miss who our new treasurer is, or do we not have one in place yet?
You do not have one in place yet, we just heard from our attorney that you'll have to appoint one before your last meeting in June, because the, the treasurer actually stays until the end of this year, till July, June 30th, so you'll have to appoint one by June 30th.
And because she needs to work with the new treasurer, it's best if we appoint the treasurer a few months in advance, so we need a process to take in some interested inquiries, I suppose.
And is that an advertising process that would go through a central office?
Yeah, we will post for that, that we're, that we're looking for a treasurer, and where, like I said, I spoke with Dana today about the process to make sure that, you know, what do we have to do to publicly warn that we're looking for a treasurer, so we'll follow her guidance and get that posted. And then you will point, this board appoints, it's not elected like in some of the boards, so the issue appoints your treasurer. For a one-year term, is that correct, Renee?
That's what Dana's note said, but it's not something that we've done on an annual basis to kind of renew Gail, it's just like she was appointed and she was there until she has resigned.
Which was our practice, but that might not necessarily make it correct. Done Dana's email today that it's a one-year appointment.
So Nick, I wanted to say in relation to the retirements, we have offered a retirement dinner and a celebration for all of our retirees at the end of the year. So somebody was wondering what we were going to be doing out here, yes, they have some long years, so we usually have a celebration where we invite the retirees and board members and the family in, to celebrate their years of service with us.
Thank you, Leon, Chela?
Is that happening this year with everything going on?
I don't know, we're, we'll wait and see if guidance changes on gatherings on whether we'll be able to do that, we were not able to do it last year.
Oh, let's see, no other?
Yes, so what, see if we do last year, just for my recollection and that.
I'm only getting about every other word from you, but I, I don't know if this is where you're going, but some boards authorize their clerk to write a letter to any retirees, some of the other boards have done that, those of you who are on the M U board know that you do that, so you could, as a board, authorize, in case we are not able to gather at the end of the year and have that celebration, you know, and and your clerk can reach out, can connect you with our public information coordinator who'd help you, you know, with some background on who they may be, in terms of that, if that's a wish of the board.
Because what's the pleasure of the board on that issue, would you like to see letters of best wishes, congratulations, that kind of thing? We have done that in other cases.
I think that's appropriate. Do I push, put that forward as a resolution?
I think, I don't know if we need resolution, we'll just, Chela is the clerk, right, you appointed her clerk this evening, or voted her in clerk, so I'll put her in touch with Danny West.
And so we just need a sense of the board, is that, raise your hand if you think that's a good idea, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good thing to do. So, any other discussion on this part of the consent agenda?
And I'm fine with that, I guess.
We're, I'll get ahold of you, Chela, how's that? I can't hear much of what you're saying, so.
It's fine, I don't know why I'm having such connection issues today, but I would, I was just wondering if there's something additional outside of a letter that we could potentially do in lieu of a dinner? If we can have a dinner.
Everybody can hear that, okay?
One, and, and I will report out to you by the April meeting, if, if the guidance changes from the state, and if it looks like we can't, then I can bring some recommendations to the board on how we may be able to do something other than a letter. I mean, but I'd still say you do the letter, but if there's some type of, we do some type of memento to remember their service because we can't acknowledge them to a dinner, I, I'd be prepared to give the board some other suggestions.
Thank you, Jim. All those in favor of?
I'm good with the letter. Good with the letter.
Not catching it, Chela, I, maybe it's my end, but.
No.
You might want to phone in.
I think she said I'm good with the letter, is that correct?
Yeah.
Just wave your hand.
She, she might want to phone in instead of using her computer.
She's nodding her head, yes.
Okay. I'll get ahold of you, Jim. So we have a motion to approve this portion of the consent agenda, and we have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Are there abstentions? Then this portion of the consent agenda is approved, we now have the minutes of January 27th and February 4th for approval.
So moved.
We have a motion from Fran.
Second it.
Second from Leon is their discussion. Seeing all those in favor of approving the minutes of January 27th and February 4th, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Did I just hear one?
Aye.
You heard, I, there were two, three now.
Aye.
All right, I think we have at least four, maybe even five. Are there abstentions? Now, we have Nicole, Jackie, Matthew, and Todd. Todd Wilkins, Richard has joined us, if we didn't give his name to you at the beginning of this session. Those are abstentions, none opposed? It sounds like the ayes. Approve, have it to, the motion carries to approve the minutes of January 27th and February 4th with those abstentions. There are no policies this meeting, the superintendent's report is next up.
One, one of the reports that we're required to present to the boards is our continuous improvement plan, so this evening, the presentation of that plan is going to be our, from our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Melissa Sennecole, so I've shared the screen with her, and she has a brief presentation for that, and then I'll give the balance of my report. Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks, Jim, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you, everybody. Can everybody see my screen? Any thumbs up from anybody? Thumbs up if you can see the presentation. Thumbs up. Thank you very much. So I want to thank everyone for this time and to be able to give an overview and take questions from the board. And I'm very grateful to be able to share the structure and purpose of our three-year continuous improvement plan and how it fits into how we report and the action steps and our progress. So, so a little bit of background. Partially because it's a shift for some of our, and I'm very grateful for all of you, long-serving board members, and also an overview for the new board members. In two thousand and one, we had No Child Left Behind, which had a focus on ELA and MAP. And then in two thousand and fourteen, Vermont had the addition of some performance measures, additional performance measures. And elements of both No Child Left Behind and the Educational Quality Standards are found in ESSA, also known as Every Student Succeeds Act from two thousand and sixteen. So the shift was towards continuous improvement. And that was how are we going to collect, respond and plan for what to do with that information and monitor our progress for all of our students. So how does this fit in? Again, we have the Educational Quality Standards and Act seventy-seven to make sure that we support all of Vermont students and all of our SVSU students through accountability, personalized learning, add to individualization and equity for all students and flexible pathways to reach those. So what is continuous improvement plan? I feel like I'm bringing you some breaking news because just today there was a memo from the AOE and I'll just take a moment. It's not on the screen, but to read to you from Josh Solier from the AOE. Continuous improvement is continual. It is ongoing improvement of practices, processes and systems through incremental breakthroughs over time or breakthrough improvement all at once. And we want to make sure that movement is have very high expectations for all of our students for growth. Has a constant review and measurement and action. We do that through benchmarking and progress monitoring through not just our academic areas, but also include social, emotional and behavioral areas. Our continuous improvement plans, just like stated in the memo from today from the AOE are going to be the pillars for our recovery plan. And our continuous improvement plan from the SVSU was used as a foundation that drove the development because each school has continuous improvement plan. I'm very proud to say that we lead every meeting that we have with our teachers and other staff where we talk about our vision, but we also reference goals in our continuous improvement plan that we're working on. And our shared vision of the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union committed to developing lifelong learners who contribute to their community and succeed in a diverse and evolving global society, never more important than right now. The five different broad areas of focus that we have, which are the pillars of our continuous improvement plan and recovery. Three of them are academic.
Yes, we lost you for a minute. Sorry.
Lost you.
Did you get the personalization is for student engagement? Darn it. Fran, I made you smile. So I'm going to keep on going. I apologize. I might, Laura, you might have to share your screen. I might have the Chayla bug on my computer now, too.
It's not the best night for technology.
No kidding. My goodness gracious. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen. Thank you, Laura Boudreaux. And I'm even going to turn off my video because Jim is right. Sometimes that's helpful. And Laura, we're already on our very first goal and they're not in order of importance, ladies and gentlemen. They're just in the order that we listed them. Goal number one is about English Language Arts. And the multiple measures that we used were from the recent results that we have from the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium. Oh, thanks, Shaila. It's not just you. And I did it on purpose to make people feel better. And that assesses student mastery of our standards. In addition, we use measured academic progress, also known as MAPS to a lot of us or NWA. And that measures our progress and growth for individual students. We take those two measures and what we found is we wanted to focus on tier one, which is our core instruction for all of our students. In addition, evidence-based instructional resources, progress monitoring and instructional practices. And those are our tier two and tier three. Those are done in addition for our students that need. And I'll take a moment to highlight the work of Dr. Katie Abbott, our instructor of student services, who's really helped and supported and driven this work. Other highlights, I'll set Laura. For English Language Arts work and what we're doing right now would be the ongoing professional learning and resources. So our K through two teachers right now are in a two-year process of going through wonderful learning, monthly learning about the science of reading. I thank them for that hard work that they're doing in changing instructional practices for our students. In addition, the instructional resources. Last spring during all of this, a group of amazing middle school teachers and administrators got together and picked your one resource and then implemented it during this time. I thank all of the English teachers, the middle school and highlight Chris McGuire, the associate principal, and Heather Voice, the literacy coach that supports and guides that amazing work. Our next goal is safe and healthy. And our two data points for that would be our SWISS data, also known as Schoolwide Informational System. And we, it's a confidential informational system used to collect, summarize student behavioral data for decision-making. And twice a year, we do some data connect collection for our multi-tier systems of support. Review the system and see how it's working. From those two data points, we found that was safe and healthy. We really want to focus on consistent and efficient data gathering processes for behavior and social, emotional learning to guide next steps for instruction and intervention for all of our students. But I want to highlight that we've made some progress even through this time. So I have to stop to say thank you to District Behavioral Coach Jessa Ordway and teams that she has monthly from every single one of our schools. And she brings them together to guide and push this work forward and help all of our teachers. You'll also see that one of the tools that we use comprehensive old platform, also known as the dashboard. This amazing data visualization tool is not something that we went out and paid for. Most districts do. We did not. This is a homegrown amazing tool that was again, two people in Arts District who've done so much work on this. Chris Aiken and Elaine Hewlett. So thank them for their work, too. Our third goal, again, not in order of importance, Pat Conway, is MAP. And we use the same multiple measures, but it would be the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium for mathematics, those standards, along with measures of academic progress for mathematics. And we really wanted to focus on that conceptual map practice and making sure all students had very high standards and we're getting those extra supports and evidence-based supports for those areas. Has this continued? Can I highlight? I really can. I can highlight the work of our district math coach and her team, that would be Pat Conway. Her team of teachers, K through twelve, and specifically some of our building-based coaches that she works with, Tricia Helene and Carrie Gardner. They've done work with the All Learners Network, which has training sessions, ongoing assessment project, also known as OGAAP, and doing much work with conceptual understanding and modeling in mathematics for all of our students. Our third academic area would be science. This is from the very first result that we received from the Vermont State Test, the science test for next generation science standards. We saw from that data that we have to focus on elementary life and physical science and make sure that we have evidence-based practices to support all students in their learning. This is continued also. And I want to highlight the work in science of our pre-K through twelve science teachers, gathering, vetted, engaging resources for our students and promoting a high level of thinking skills. And this would be K through twelve, pre-K through twelve, pardon me. In addition, I thank Laura Boudreaux for bringing in the Boston Museum of Science and the resources and training that they have provided through their engineering is elementary kits and training. And the added bonus of saying that that person at the Boston Museum of Science that designed all of it is also an MAU graduate. So a little feather in our cap to say we have that, too. Our last goal would be in personalization. We use the Vermont AOE Critical Elements of Personalized Learning Rubric to assess how are our personalized learning plans going? And we want to make sure that our personalized learning plans promote that student engagement, involvement and planning for their future and advocating and having those flexible pathways to show what they know and documenting that. Has that continued? It really has. Generally, mostly in the seven through twelve right now. And I want to highlight the work of the middle school and high school. Specifically at the middle school, thank you Hannah Green. And at the high school, thank you Nancy Vanderbilt and all of the teachers that put into so much work to promote goal setting and having students advocate for themselves in their personalized learning plans. We hope to continue to grow that, to have it go into our younger grades also. And last but not least, putting all the pieces together. Well, our SVSU Continuous Improvement Plan is going to be the framework for the next steps for our recovery. Our recovery is going to be social, emotional, student engagement and academic achievement for all of our learners. Thank you again to everyone for your time and attention. And it was my pleasure to share the three-year plan and also to really highlight just some, just some of the amazing and dedicated staff that we have who are doing such work during unbelievable conditions for all of our learners. I'll take any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Melissa? Any board members? Melissa, I'm not seeing any right now, but I want, I want to say to the board, it's a brief presentation. Sorry. But it trying to be serious. It's a, but my aunt's calling me. It's, it's, it's and those of you who work with me, you know, when Auntie Faye calls, right? So Melissa, a brief presentation. It's just the highlight of the hours and hours and days of work that she dedicates and the people that work with her. So I want to thank you for that. You've thanked your people, but I want to thank you for what you do for us and and what you bring to this organization. So thank you for that.
And the last time that I was here, Dr. Kelly asked me about assessments. And in the meantime, I was able to train. After that meeting, we were able to train everyone in every building and I can tell you that it's well underway. There's some amazing work going on in trying to engage students in the assessments that will happen this spring. So highlight that work, too. It's, it's pretty amazing and the communication to families to say that we're trying to do it in the most safe and healthy way that we possibly can.
I'm, I'm so happy to hear that, that you're having an assessment this year. So many school districts want to opt out, but I, I really think there will be gains in, for, for many kids who didn't have gains before. So it'd be interesting to see the statistics on it.
There's only one way to find that out, so.
Yes.
But you're right, there are in, in, in other states and other districts asking the Biden administration to consider suspending testing, just do local assess, local assessment options only like, you know, our MAP testing, but but we haven't received any word from the state that that, that they're going to apply for that waiver at all. So and so far, the federal government has indicated that they're not going to entertain that. So we'll see what happens. Any other questions from Melissa before I move on? Dick, France?
I don't have a question. I just want to say that often these presentations, which we ask for include a flood of acronyms and a lot of information that is well over my head. I just want to say thank you for giving me something that I can understand.
Yeah.
I'll take a moment, Mr. Grant. That was the guidance of, of Mr. Culkin. And I said to him, being in edgy speech for so long, it's just like training someone not to swear so much. Sometimes they don't even know when they're doing it. So I appreciate that, Mr. France. Thank you.
It, it probably won't surprise you, you know, that we practice these presentations and Melissa did a great job of fleshing out most of the acronyms, but there were a few that I did caught, catch. That's what she was referring to and we it's in any profession, you talk in a language that you understand and you forget that there are people who are listening or outside your profession and may not understand what those acronyms are. So sometimes we need to slow down and say what they are. So so I.
Yeah, I think Scott wanted to say something. Sorry.
Oh, Scott.
Can I just ask a, yeah, a quick question with regard to testing? I, I saw a message today that there's a group of kids at Shappsbury and probably others that are getting receiving testing the week right after April vacation. And I don't know whether I, I, I don't know enough to know whether or not that's, that's a good idea or a bad idea. But I, I, I would like to ask if, what the thoughts are on testing and when to do it. It seems to me that after a year that's been so broken up, the week right after a vacation might be a, a terrible time to, to be doing standardized tests. And so what are the thoughts there?
Melissa or Laura, is either one of you want to address that about the testing window?
Sure. So we always provide the state testing window, a question that always comes down and I lean on Michael Hawk, who has since retired, but, but was working for the AOE in assessment. And he looked at the measure of at least the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium and said that because it does adhere to the student and where they would be, it makes their, their assessment of the assessment is that it makes no difference if you take it in March and it opens in March fifteenth or if you take it at June. So the timing they have given us, as long as it's within that time. And I'm willing, Laura, you can jump in. I don't know about anything with coming back from vacations that would impact any kind of standardized testing.
Melissa, I thought that was a, a perfect, perfect summary. And so they do give us a large window and then each school thinks about, you know, the, 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 the other it, things that might impact that to create a schedule. So, but it's a great, a great, it is always a great conversation to, to really think about what is the, the best time.
But it is amazing data that, that there's little impact on test results on when you do it in that window, so. Is that?
All right.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me now?
Miss Chayla, did you have a question? And I think Ray.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if I could be heard at this point.
Oh, yeah, you're clear.
You're good right now. There you go.
I just wanted to kind of add to what Scott was saying that if there is a opportunity for schools to consider not scheduling it after breaks, then that would be something that I think would be a good idea for, for students because that is not probably the best time to be administering a test for kids. They, takes them a little bit to get back into the swing of things to begin with and jumping right into the, the S-BAX might be tough. Just wanted to support his point.
I think Ray had a, had his hand up, too.
I would say essentially the same thing and I'm not sure I trust the data.
I'm not sure I trust the data, but I, I suppose, I was going to ask, was there data? And you said there is, but. We're not seeing it. So I, I don't know what it looks like, you know?
We'll take that under advisement. I, my. We give a window. The schools pick their test dates. So we did not assign them the test date. So. But we can certainly bring your concerns to the principals who selected the test date for their schools. So the SU does not, you know, we know when the windows are, but we don't, we do not assign the test, the, the test weekend.
I think, I think from, from my perspective, there's so many people who say, who would judge a school solely by test. And obviously. There, the window, and I get it all that, but if there's any, if there's any opportunity, and I'm, I know you all have the exact same goals, but if there's any opportunity to give these kids. A better opportunity to do well on these tests. It certainly helps all of us when we have to answer the questions of why is this school so low or why is that school so much higher? It's, it's not an enviable position for board members to be in and we've all felt it.
Yeah.
And I'll just leave it at that. And I, I trust, I trust the professionals here. It's, it's just a question that I had to ask.
Yeah, I understand. We'll address it with the principals. And ask, you know, as I think it was either Laura or Melissa said, a lot of times it's what else is bumping up against the testing window on the other side? That they're trying to get the testing done. I, I, I don't know what was behind the decision of principals to pick. Those who did pick that week, but we can inquire. I guess I, I, I will say I come from a different point of view that. I don't think that's necessarily bad. The kids come back from vacation. Hopefully. Refreshed and they've taken a break from. All the stress that we've been under this past year and then come back and test. Cause any type of, you know, cramming leading up to, to that test, trying to, that a teacher. I think can sometimes only add even more anxiety to the testing process and not necessarily be helpful, but. You know, where, where, there's always going to be. Multiple opinions on what is the best time to test and whether you, you know. You embrace the data that the state has shown us or not, but. I, I can promise you that we will discuss that at our principals meeting and see if there is any leeway on that. Any other questions from Melissa before I finish my report? I'm not seeing anybody. Okay. It's next on the agenda on this superintendent report is the Equity Coordinator Deduction. Jonathan Phillips has joined us, but he had a schedule conflict this evening. So I, I allowed him to not come tonight and I. Promised him we'll bring him back at the April meeting that you can eat, meet Jonathan. He is. Hit the ground running for us in this needed position. And, you know. I may be repeating myself from a previous meeting. As all our administrators here to develop an entry plan. With my approval of how he comes into the job and who he meets and who he talks, what his goals are. And he is well through that entry plan. And has shown the versatility to shift in that entry plan to include other people as he meets. Key people in the community, others who say, well, you need to talk to this person. And he has shown great flexibility to doing that. And he has begun. You know, reaching, touring some of our schools, which we've, you know, where. We've limit that right now as much as possible, because even though we're not in pods, people do tend to get nervous when people aren't in that building every day. Are coming through. So trying to be mindful of that. But so he'll be an extra. I just wanted to address that because it's on the agenda, not next week. It'll be a next month. So we talked about vacation. That is the week of April 12th, just so that, you know, let me get it out there so that everybody knows. So school vacation will be the week of April 12th. We talked about acronyms, so I'm going to give you another one. ESSER, you'll be hearing a lot of that. And that stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. And there is a lot of money attached to that. And there's a lot of work to attach to it. We had this, we have to submit a recovery plan to say we have to, for how we're going to spend this money. Who's going to coordinate it? We have co-coordinators for our recovery team and we have a recovery team that's been submitted to the state. That team is now scheduled to be every Tuesday at 11 o'clock. That may, that may change, but it seemed to be a good time for everybody right now. As they continue their work. It will. Recovery will not take place this all in, in one summer. In fact, recovery efforts may be very small this summer as we scale up. This is a process that could take up to three years. When I say there's a lot of money at stake, our ESSER two accommodation allocation. Is Renee, 8.2 million. Is that correct? Yep. And that is wonderful. But at the same time, for my fellow administrators, a little scary about what do we do with that? Well, what are we going to do with? Well, that's what our recovery plans that. Were developing. You heard the three points that Melissa mentioned that is, has to be the focus of our recovery plans. Social, emotional, student engagement and academic. So we also can use that money for hopefully upgrading. The facilities, particularly around ventilation in our buildings that we haven't already been able to address. So there's a lot of opportunity here. The challenges with, with, that we've always experienced is can we find the right personnel to do it? You know, and how many open positions and so it's. It's one of those mixed blessings. It's, it's great that this, this funding is coming our way. But. The anxiety that Laura and I have in our daily meetings is, you know, everybody. Every school district is going to be chasing the same thing. Maybe some of the same providers and same contractors and vendors and. So that's going to be, it's going to be a race to lock somebody up first.
Jim, a question on that?
Yeah.
The dollar amount that you're referencing, that's the, that's the phase two, correct?
Phase two, correct. Yep.
So phase three. Is even more daunting.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And those are, those are RSU numbers. I don't believe those numbers include what's going to come with Arlington and Sandgate. So.
No, I know, but in total, SVSU is $26 million.
$26 million. Yeah. I was trying to avoid saying that number.
It's a lot of money.
It is, it is. I mean, that's.
And the need for a robust plan for it.
Yep.
Can I ask a question?
That's what we're here for.
Okay, so with this money, does it include? For instance, extra staff for. You know, I'm very concerned about the lower elementary, the, the K through three. Learning to read remotely, you know?
Absolutely. Include money for staff. And that's what I'm talking about, like.
My suggestion, my suggestion would be to, to give each, each lower elementary, you know, the K, at least K two. An aide in their classroom to, to help the beginning readers.
Yeah. Well, I would rather put a teacher than, and I want, we want fully qualified professionals. No slight to our parent educators who work so hard for us, but. You know, the guidance from the state of Vermont is that in, they would rather see us. Have a teacher.
Wonderful.
Coach. So there's. And that's what I'm talking about. Can, can we hire enough people? And, and then. Are they temporary workers? Because, you know, think, think of what before COVID hit. One thing's we consistently heard from Vermont. AOE goes back to Rebecca Holt, if you remember her giving a presentation about Vermont has. One of the highest staff to student ratios in the country. And now you're telling me to add more. So.
They don't have, they don't have the highest staff to student ratio in elementary.
Yeah.
They have it, they have it in the middle in high school.
Well, it's, it's certainly one of the highest in the country.
Right.
And, you know, it, so.
Am I correct on those statistics, by the way?
I have no idea.
Well, I, I kind of looked at that and it was, I could never figure out how many staff was in the high school and. Who was teaching what and how many classes and how many kids were assigned to each, but you can in the elementary. And so the, the lower the number in, and I'm only talking about the first three grades. The better, the better chances you have of, of really helping kids read.
Well, my, I'm a firm believer in if you've been in a staff meeting with me, but you haven't. So I'll, I'll, I'll repeat it here. We can't do enough for our, our younger grades, you know, we. By the time they get to high school, we're doing so much recovery work. Our emphasis needs to be on the lower grades as much as possible. And whether, whether we start talking about ideas like an extended day with this money. Which is something that I would really be in favor with, but we may have to negotiate to do that. And, and, and in an extended day, not like. What we've done before with like after school care or something like that. I'm talking about more of. Recovery activities for our social, emotional and academic needs of our students in an extended day. And in our, in our lower grades, it's crucial how, how. We can't, we can't, if we can't. Teach literacy and get students to read as younger age, then we are struggling with that student. Throughout their educational career. So I, I couldn't agree more with, we have to put. Emphasis on those grades. Any other questions on ESSER? Which again, I'm going to read it to you so that I, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. So you'll be, but we'll call it ESSER for short from now on. So we talked about school vacation. I told you what it is. I will say that. I have no intention to have schools operate remotely the week after April vacation. All our staff who wish to be vaccinated should be vaccinated by that date. And, and then hopefully there'll be even more vaccinations going out throughout the state as they lower the age groups. The, it doesn't mean that we're not going to still have. Outbreaks. You know, we, we had one early this week. I have. The fifth grader panel elementary is operating remotely. This week until the middle of next week because of a number of cases there. But we didn't have to shut down the whole school and that's not going to be our plan going forward because we, we're seeing smaller numbers. So I, I, I just want to say publicly. Cause we did it after Thanksgiving. We did it after Christmas. We did it after February vacation and it worked well for us. That we were able to keep the schools open because we didn't see. A massive spread from people returning from vacation. So we do not intend to do it because of the vaccination. We do not intend to do it in April. So we will be. The in-person learning that will be in our newsletter on Friday. And it'll stay in our newsletter every Friday until we get to April vacation. So now. That said. There could be. You know, you know, there could be a, a surge that comes back our way and I might have to reconsider it. But right now, as of today, I'm telling you that we will be for in-person learning after vacation. In our next week, our third vaccination for, that our staff are eligible to sign up for, but they can go anywhere in the state and they often. Go to pharmacies is going to be April 10th again at Southwest Mont. The form, the gymnasium, the former Southwest. Vermont College. And I, again, I can't thank the praise that I'm hearing for Southwest Vermont Medical Center. For their work on this and how smooth that that has gone. So again, I want to thank them for that, which I. I hope that this means we're turning the corner. So that's, that's April 10th. That's the third vaccination site here, but as I said, our employees are out, they can go anywhere. So what, what happens with our real, like, we're right now, we're in phase three, which is four days a week. With Wednesday remaining asynchronous. And we have a delayed stat every day on the, on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And why do we do that? That is time to give the teachers time to check in with those students who are still remote. Our, our current numbers are 15% of our elementary families have still opted out for full remote. 25% of MAU families have opted out for still remote. So we need to provide our teachers time that they can connect in with those. In with those students and families that are fully remote. So it's. Are we going to change? I have no intention to change that operating model until. I get guidance from the state, whether they're going to change anything. We've heard from the CDC. You know, last week there was, the last weekend, there was a lot of buzz in the, in the news about the CDC changing their guidelines, the Center for Disease Control. Not the former Southwest Tech's name. And. Vermont has not done anything with that yet. And what superintendents are being told is that that guidance will not change before April 1st. And it may not change on April 1st, but it won't be at least until after April 1st. And for us. It's the middle school and high school is the schools that are struggling the most. With getting 100% of their students in because the physical distance and guidance for them is still. Six feet despite what are the, the Center for Disease Control, when I said Vermont's still telling us it's six feet. And the restrictions are still there on transportation and how many students that can put on a school bus. So I, I don't see how we move off of the model that we are on. And, and then at what point then? Even if the guidance does change. How many Wednesdays do I have left? Before we get to the end of the year. Last day of school right now is scheduled to be June 11th. So we're, we're rapidly getting to the end. Which brings me to another comment I like to make. I. It was March 17th that. We shut down last year. I can't believe that I'm sitting here a year later. Still talking about these issues. I, I naively thought that we would shut down for a few weeks and everybody would quarantine and. Let this virus pass over us. And then it quickly became apparent that it was going to be longer than that. And it was like, can we return after April vacation? And then quickly started having discussions about what end of the year looks like. And then I thought that summer would. Kind of take care of us, give us time to correct it. Never thought that would be canceling a football season. I remember having that discussion with Renee Gordon, who. Told me I couldn't even talk about it. And. Yet it all happened. And, and here we are again, a year later and still into discussions to what, you know, graduation would look like. There may be public listening, so let me say this again. I said at the MAU meeting last, last week. Right now. Graduation is a drive-by graduation, just like it was last year. Yet we are simultaneously planning to possibly do something outside. And that means like, you know, making sure that chairs and staging and all of that is available. If the guidance from the state changes, then we will do everything we can to accommodate. You know, our seniors and our, and our graduates. So I guess I'm, you know, I'm asking for patience for everybody as we wait to see if the guidance changes. And, and then how quickly we can shift. Or are we, are we better off just staying in the model that we are right now as we come to a conclusion of the school? Check my notes and see if there's. I think, oh, and I, Bill Basicus here, and I just want to let everyone know that Bill joined us. For our principals and directors meeting and he will be now coming to those as we, to our meetings. And I think, Bill, if I took anything away from that meeting is how many other? Things that we're, we're, we still need to work on as we. Become one. And I just want. The board members here from Arlington and Sandgate to know that I, I appreciate the. You know, the difficultness, the, the awkwardness to this. But, you know, we're going to do everything we can to be flexible and accommodating. And, and respectful to. All the schools involved. So, you know, I'm welcome, Bill. And it, it. It's amazing every time we meet, how many other items come up that we still need to address, but. I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I'm confident that we can, we can work out and. Talk through anything and as we go through what we're calling a transition year. I'll end with that.
Which is why we asked for an additional year.
Right. We're in the middle of COVID, right?
Yeah, sure.
I guess there's never a good time to do it. And, but this certainly is probably one of the worst.
I can't imagine a worse. Perfect storm of trying to make this happen. So. But understand and respect the amount of work that it's taking. but understand and respect the amount of work that it's taking for, for everybody to make it happen.
Well, I think we, I am fortunate to work with some wonderful people. And, um, we are committed to, uh, working together and making this work and make it as seamless as possible, but there will be bumps. As long as we understand that, we'll work through it.
Yeah, and as, and as much as we can have sort of transparent, honest communication, we can work through those.
Any questions for me tonight?
I stepped away for a minute or two, Jim. I didn't know whether you mentioned that, uh, you have two negotiation teams going.
No, I didn't. I, Leon is part of both of those teams. I'm fine if you would like to give an update on that as part of this.
Oh, I just wanted to know that, uh, we're trying to do, uh, I mean, start out with E S P. And, uh, really work with some groundbreaking things in terms of what's been happening with COVID around in the education to try to fill some gaps with the, not only with the students, but the teachers and the, uh, uh, the prepare professionals and the, uh, the help of all the individuals within the school system in terms of, uh, how we look at, uh, conversation for pay. And I said teachers in there, but mainly this is the E S P part along that line. So we have a new person that's, uh, uh, working the contracts in terms of, uh, the association that's taking Norm Bortles' place for both, uh, the E S P and eventually the teachers. So, uh, uh, we're moving right along. We're, we're meeting both nights. Um, E S P first and teachers the second, a term of that, and things are, uh, are moving as, as well as we expect right now.
I think it could be a monumental shift for our support staff if we can, um, adopt some of the proposals that are there for their contract petition, particularly around their professional learning. To, to, to provide a more educated workforce.
Right. Jim, do you still, uh, uh, do you even have time? Or how, what's the format for exit interviews? Is that still part of the process?
So Nick Galt is do, does our exit interviews for anyone who requests money, are automatically sends out uh, information, but many decline. And then I get a synopsis from, uh, Nick when I require. So I am not personally doing any exit interviews unless, uh, uh, except I, I said, I, some have requested. So I, I, you know, that they wanted to speak to me directly. So otherwise I get a synopsis from Nick. Thanks.
So Dick, I just wanted to say, we, we said at, uh, uh, when we was talking about exit interviews that we wanted to just know something by the end of the year, to know how we stand, just, uh, a general, a review of, of what's happened and what some of the things are as for the people that are leaving and vice versa. And I, I don't, I don't remember where we're saying we're going to put that.
I'll make a note on that, see like, you know. I want to make sure that, um, we respect people's privacy and don't, you know, we would never release names or unless they wanted to address the board, which sometimes you've had that happen in a letter, so. But you would like, you, what you're saying is like a synopsis.
That's, that's what we had asked, that we wanted to try to do when everybody was concerned about a lot of exits that took place some time ago. We're saying, wait, we need to have these exit interviews going. And it may be saying, well, we had, uh, fifty people leave and then only twenty-five decided to actually provide information or something along that line, and it was either helpful or not helpful or vice versa along that line. But we, we like.
For you on how many were actually done, how many respond to doing it. And sometimes the accident issue is really just an email or a phone call. It's not, the, it's especially this year, there's been no formal process that somebody's come in and done it, so, but I will, uh, put then, made a note for that.
I, I'd like to add, uh, onto what Leon said, that I think i- if, if you want to make this, um, viable, uh, to know why people leave and, and track, and not who left, but track things. Statistically, for instance, how long were they in the system? You know, whether they were high school or grade school, uh, you know, whether they lived in New York or lived in, um, lived i- in Bennington, uh, it, uh, it would be good to know those types of things so that when we interview people for positions, we'll know.
So, you know, I do know those things and I look at them. I just, I, I, I guess I didn't necessarily share that information with the board because you aren't doing the interviews or hirings or all that, but I can give you a, a synopsis of what gets. I don't even know how many do, I, how many interviews we have. I'd have to go back, how many exit interviews actually happen? Whereas how many people decline to even take, take part in it? And then that can tell you something, you know, you have to take that in too, like, who wants to say something when they're going out the door? And who has, you know, who has nothing to say and what, you know, what, what, what are we seeing from that? But we, you know, we do it for a reason, so we do look at that. I just haven't shared that to the board.
It's one of the questions I always have is, are, are, are people leaving after the first two or three years of teaching here as a beginning teacher, uh, and going someplace else where they get a better salary? You see, and so it, do we as a, as a group need to up that beginning salary so that we keep?
I've certainly mentioned that in negotiations, and we did do that last year. We did eliminate a bottom step for that, that very same reason, for, you know, a lower starting salary, trying to get that up. And I, I believe we also have too many steps in our, and it takes a little time for a, a new teacher to.
Right.
So, and that's why, if you remember negotiations last time, we, even though we eliminated the bottom step, we did not add a step at the top. Which was one thing that was wanted, so.
Right, and, and the other thing, at least the last time I was on the negotiation team was that, people who aren't, uh, um, asking, uh, well, we're giving them money to take more classes and they weren't taking them. And, uh, not just, um, continuing ed, but regular classes. And so that was one of, I think, one of the reasons we used for stopping at the, uh, on the first level where people just stayed stagnant.
Well, that, you did do that in the, um, previous negotiations. So you, if you don't move over, you can't move down further on the first three columns, so. I can, um, the other note that I did, Jackie, based on your question in a future report, we could do a report on, um, what professional learning looks like in our district, you know, like I, you know, we could easily calculate, tell you how many staff members have availed themselves of taking a college course this year. The contract allows reimbursement for up to two and, um, uh, but professional learning just isn't, as you know, in college courses, we also offer a lot of professional learning through the S U too, but I'm sure we could give a report to the board at a future meeting, and that's what I'm making notes for. My, a lot of what I talk about in meetings is what you asked me at the previous meeting. So, uh, we could generate a report, um, on what that looks like from an S U wide.
We can probably include that in the next, um, next, you know, the report too.
Well, I don't want to promise it'll be next month because I got to talk to some people after this meeting, they'll tell me like, you know how much work that is to put that together? So I'll promise you that it will be on a future agenda, but I won't promise that it'll be on the April.
Are you, are you all set, Jim?
I, I am, thank you.
Okay.
I think Ray has a question.
I, I don't have a question, a, a comment. I think, uh, Jackie's idea of, uh, a statistical version of an exit interview, which would cover people who don't choose to speak, uh, would, would be a some metrics, uh, such as, such as she suggested. I'm sure there's actually a longer list of metrics that could be taken up and analyzed, uh, probably with some uh, useful insights.
And I said, I internally, we do that. It's just not something that I've shared with the board at this point. But, um, we'll put a report together again for a future meeting that is in a broader stroke than some of the, um, specifics that we're looking at internally. All good questions. I'm good if there's no more.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Um, I just have a few items. First of all, thank you for the, um, memo that you put out on, uh, role playing. Um, I think that's an important statement, so thank you for that. I also want to thank the members of the negotiating team, uh, teams. They do an awful lot of work in uncomfortable situations where we don't want to give out money and they have to figure out, um, how to make people happy. So, um, that's a group of people, um, Leon, Scott, uh, Fran, that, um, really are the backbone of what we're doing here. The other thing I wanted to say was, as a board, we probably should look at goals going forward. Um, one of those goals, um, we're probably on the same page here, was to take a look at the highlights and the lowlights of, um, exit interviews. Um, and see where we're going, where we've been, and maybe that gives us some indicators about what we need to do next. So I would encourage, um, board members to make lists. What do you want to see us consider for special projects, uh? Information sessions like, uh, Melissa produced tonight, um, those kind of things. If there are specific items we want, we should kind of plan them as goals. So we aren't jamming up administration with, this is what I want for the next meeting. They've got a little advanced warning. So if you would produce goals.
Brandon, you muted yourself. And Dave, Dick, you muted yourself.
Usually what I've got to say is. So we'll establish goals if you would, and, um, going forward here, we have to make committee assignments. I would, um, definitely like to ensure that, um, Arlington and Sandgate are included um, in our processes go forward. Typically, we have standing committees in finance, policy, personnel, superintendent's evaluation and negotiations. I can read off who is currently on those committees. Um, we can make changes from there. Um, finance is, uh, myself, uh, Ray and Shayla. I would suggest that, uh, Nicole and Matt might jump into that, and we can figure out how to do that. Do those things by Zoom, if that's okay with, uh, Nicole and Matt. I don't hear.
Into finance specifically?
Uh, well, there's, there's other committees coming up here.
Yeah.
Get a share, it's several of them, but, um, finance, you seem to, um, have a good grasp of the numbers, so. If you don't like that, then please say so.
My interest is elsewhere.
Elsewhere. Would it be in policy?
Yep.
I, I had you there also, along with, uh, Leon and myself. And, uh, I was also looking at, um, Matt. If Matt is interested. I don't, yes, he's still here.
I'm still here. I'm, I'm good either way.
Okay, then we'll put you down for that. The Personnel Committee, which doesn't really meet too often, um, is Ray, myself, um, I was gonna, um, put Matt and ask Todd if he would participate in the Personnel Committee.
Happy to do so.
Great. The Superintendent's Evaluation Committee currently includes Leon, uh, Ray Malino, Chela Sikora and myself. Would you be interested in, um, participating in that, Nicole?
Be happy to.
Which leaves us with negotiations.
No, thank you.
Well, Leon, Leon and Fran and Scott, I tried like crazy to butter them up early so that they'll stay where they are. They do a great job, and I made an assumption that Todd would be, uh, an important part of that also, if he's willing.
Yeah, I'm willing to, uh, work on negotiations if, if need be.
So those are, are the general committee assignments, Jackie?
Well, I, I'd like to work on the negotiation committee. You haven't assigned me anything else.
You're right. How about if I do?
Okay.
Are there other committees you'd like to participate in?
That, that's good for right now. I, I, I'm already on the two policy committees.
Okay, uh, what I'll do is produce a, a list of, uh, the assignments and I'll get it out to everybody. And, uh, I'll get that maybe also in central office so that, um, she knows who to contact um, for sessions. Um, that's all I have, um, included in your packet were, uh, informational things on the budget status report, the student enrollment and the school calendar. Are there any other issues to be brought before the board tonight?
Dick, I will just say, if, if Jackie's, you know, if, if you have a committee that, um, needs more participation than others and you are looking for someone on finance, I'm happy to do that as opposed to something else.
Well, I think we got you on two others anyway, so if you'd rather skip finance.
Okay, you're okay with that. That's fine.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Any other to be brought before the board?
Just want to apologize for all my audio issues.
We'll get you back.
I think what our teachers deal with every day, when we're, when they're working remotely.
Exactly.
You'd remind them.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, all those in favor, big five, a thing, aye? Thank you for your patience, very long meeting. Thank you, folks.